muted, so we're live from Farmington.
It's Wednesday night.
We're, this is the town Farmington planning board meeting for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Let's start with the pledge allegiance. Will we have our scout leaders in the pledge allegiance, please?
I'll do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, not a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me get my magic little cheat sheet out here. So there's a sign-in sheet. Hopefully everybody's signed in so the clerk knows who is here tonight. Emergency exits, one on the back corner over here and the one you came in. And the rule is always follow Ron out. This will be your first one out to go. He'll, he'll lead the way. Um, please silence all your cell phones and all other electronic devices, watches, et cetera, so we don't get interrupted. We will be following the planning board rules and procedures adopted by this board on February second of twenty twenty-two. And necessarily absent tonight is Aaron Twingy. Everybody else is present and accounted for. Next item up is approval of the minutes. Everybody get a chance to review them? Anybody have any changes, directions? We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second by Doug and Adrian. Paul's vagrating, probably saying that. Okay, legal notices were published Wednesday, March ninth of twenty twenty-two, and I believe they're distributed on our website. First item up is a continued public hearing PB zero two zero three nine twenty-two, preliminary two lot subdivision for David and Andrew Katz. Let us know what's going on, David.
I want to get all the departments done. I just want to proceed as quickly as possible.
Okay, that's it. Ron?
Yeah, I drafted a resolution. When I drafted it, there was a condition in there about the reference to the theme of Q three designation that appeared on court. And I've since talked to David and I talked to his surveyor. And we perched the preliminary map to show the zone A and the zone C. The encore information cited in the graph, which doesn't work under our code, so I'm the surveyor on the way to opening on Friday, and we appreciate the education process.
There you go. We're ready. Okay, we're ready. Dan?
Uh, yeah, Ron summed this up nicely. Last time he was here, we got a lot of concerns. They have been meeting with the staff. We had some good discussions, uh, and we got to a real good spot. And then there were some outstanding things that Ron caught too. Uh, but right now I think we're in a good spot for the addition, uh, sheet and, uh, your resolution that's drafted for you.
Cool. Highway Tim?
Um, yeah, Dave, I talked to your neighbor and, uh, he had no water issues there, so we don't need to require uh, cobbler pipes under the driveway. Uh, just the, uh, the original site design for the driveway. But the ten, eight ten feet. But we'll need the cobbler pipes.
Good. Okay, Lance, engineering.
We're good in some comments.
Okay, okay. This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the room to speak for or against this application? Again, anyone in the room to speak for or against the application? All right, online. What do we got online there?
We have one person online tonight, but it's not for this session.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just check. Anyone online like to speak for or against the uh, cats from only two lots subdivision? Hearing none. Okay. We will go to the board. Any questions there? Or, uh, Tim?
Uh, no questions remain.
Doug?
Hi, Robin.
Adrian?
I'm good with the changes.
I'm good with this too. So we have a motion to close the public hearing and approve the preliminary two lot subdivision with condition. Do I have to also waive the reading? So move, so moved by Doug, second by Tim. Yeah, any other comment? Let me explain what we're doing here. We have a resolution to approve the application for two lot subdivisions. There are some conditions. They're pretty basic conditions, uh, as they relate to, um, more things like renaming something on the drawing, and I will let you have a copy of this if you'd like for, for where I know you're doing a project with scout. So I can give you a copy of this to kind of show you the types of things we do in public. So um, with that said, everybody agreed, we have a motion and a second. Uh, pardon?
Yeah, I just want to point out that some of the conditions in there have already been addressed
Correct.
by the applicant surveyor. So, so even though they're there.
They've already been taken care of.
They were being edited, we got, we do.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Delusia?
All right.
The beat?
All right.
Adrian Bellas?
All right. All right. Okay, so that's approved. You're good to go. Clean up the things there, get in your final, and then we'll push her through. Okay? Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Okay, next item up is another continued site plan, uh, public hearing relates to PB zero seven zero three, um, for zero seven zero three of twenty twenty-one, the preliminary site plan approval lot four uh, of the Loomis Road Industrial Park, and we have a continued public hearing for the special use permit as well at the same time. This is for PB zero eight zero four nine twenty-one special use permit for the Loomis Road Industrial Park. So we have two public hearings open, and I believe Dan?
Yep.
You're up.
I will talk on these. Um, I've been trying to work with the applicant. He's been, we've been playing a lot of phone tag, so I'm requesting a thirty day for this. Um, this might be a withdrawal completely. Uh, we're, we're trying to work out those details of the timeframe. It's a project they definitely want to continue with, but with the project say of going on in Victor, this might be delayed more. They do not want to just have this sitting out there for this board. So they're, they're trying to figure out what makes the most sense. Um, I've had some brief conversations, but like I said, I've been playing a lot of phone tag back and forth. So, um, I'm asking for the board to give me to your April twentieth meeting, um, to try to just give us a little, stab a little bit more time to work on this.
So what this basically is, is this is a subdivision in line on Loomis Road where they want to build on one of the lots, actually, the one in the back along the thruway. They want to put in a, for lack of better words, an auto detailing gallop custom accessory type of uh, facility that would augment and support the new Victor Chrysler Ram Dodge Jeep folks that they're building the new one down on ninety-six in Victor. This would be owned by them and doing work that would also help that business along. So just to kind of put it in perspective, where it is, it's down closed. It's kind of butts up to the, um, the hotel on the, the hill there. It's kind of the next one to the east of that on that north side of Loomis Road. So just trying to put, to put it in perspective. Anything, Ron? Highway engineering. Okay, this is a public hearing. We have to go through this, even though we're going to put this out. Do I have anyone here in the room or online to speak for or against this application? Do I have anyone here or online to speak for or against these applications for the Loomis Road Industrial Park, top four? Okay, does the board have anything? No. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution that was presented to continue this to April twentieth and, uh, waive the reading of that resolution.
I'm gonna block him.
Ball block the two, yes. Moved by Adrian, seconded by Doug. Any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote.
Delusia?
Hi.
The beat? Adrian Bellas?
Hi.
You're supposed to be me. I can hear you, but that's my good ear thing.
That's my loaded first.
Not supposed to have fun at these meetings, so put that down if we're having any fun, okay? Okay, next item up, PB zero one zero four nine twenty-two special use permit, public hearing. And then we have a preliminary site plan approval for the Safeway Storage. So let us know what's happening and where we stand.
We're plugging away and hopefully fixing everything that needs to be fixed and getting straightened out if we're getting closer and closer. I know a lot of work was done the last couple of days. Uh, getting some things moved around and so forth, so it's just small progress.
Cool. Dan, because engineer is online. Okay, Don, right?
Yes, I'm online.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Okay, um, let me just turn over the staff and we can fill, you know, you can fill in any holes that we might add. Ron?
Yeah, uh, we, we got a, uh, one that we accepted. Uh, the staff
Right.
at the past meeting you did, uh, with the changes that Don had done. We submitted part two and three for your consideration, along with a resolution for determination of non-significance on the action. Um, it's with the caveat that we believe that things can be worked out regarding details of the site plan.
Right.
If, if they can't, then we can go back and revisit, secure and amend if necessary. Um, in doing so, this then allows the zoning board of appeals on the end of the month to, uh, consider an area of variance request for the condition of the warehouse structure. I got that right, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm telling you.
You're all.
All this legal leads up.
All right, let me put things into perspective again, because I know that was all very, and I understand that, okay? Ron speaks that way all the time. We, we've learned to love it and appreciate it. But the New York State has a program called State Environmental Quality Review, which basically means that we are required to look at the environmental impact of every single project that comes across our desk. And in this case specifically, seeker, what we call seeker, state environment environmental quality review. Uh, these acronyms, I'm telling you. And, uh, we have reviewed this. Now, this site doesn't have much from an environmental standpoint, but we still have to go through the motions because the next thing that this project goes to is to the zoning board of appeals, where they have to make a determination on the size of a building because the size doesn't is outside the code requirements for that building. Once they have ruled, the zoning board has ruled, it comes back to us, seeker rule had been satisfied as it is, then we will look at the preliminary site plan and the special use permit for this application and review it, and if there are any changes or whatever that might affect or we feel might affect the environmental record, we would then go through and do another review of the environmental record. In this case, the answer is probably not, but we, we don't put that out because you never know. So that's kind of what we're doing. This is Safeway Storage. It's a storage, it's a expansion of the storage units that are down on Colette across from FedEx down in, and that's what this is. And they have blocked the parcel and combined the parcel, that's all empty space on that lot now is going to be open, and if you looked at the drawings, it's, it's storage unit that I'm going to that. So I just want to put it in perspective for you of what we're trying to do, why we're doing it, and why we're doing it the way we're doing it. Because there is a method to our madness, and we have to go through and check all these boxes or we'll end up in court again. Or, or for seeker, and that one story I don't want to get into. But I just want to put things in perspective for you. Okay, Dan, I'm sorry.
No, um, Ron something up. I mean, you're looking at seeker tonight and, um, then the site plan and special use all have to be continued until we get a verdict from the ZDA. So, uh, and of course, depending on what the ZDA does, it could change the site plan and it could be back looking at seeker again, but as of right now, I think we're in a good spot for seeker.
So let's talk, since we're at that point between the applicant and Don and you, about what, what you perceive as a date we want to continue this to. As I see it, the earliest would be the first meeting in April, and that seems a little bit early. Um, second meeting in April might be better, but that's, you guys gotta tell me what you're looking.
So I don't, I haven't talked to the applicant about this. Uh, and one of the things I have talked to the applicant about is, is his concern to get this project moving.
I know.
Uh, but on the same token, we have the ZDA meeting. Uh, your next meeting is on the sixth. Uh, the PRC meeting is on the first. Uh, so there's not much time to make a bunch of changes immediately. Uh, I, I can't tell the future. I don't know what the ZDA is gonna do. Um, I mean, their site plan they have approved by the ZDA might not need any change, or very few changes.
Right.
Or if it's denied by the ZDA, there might be multiple changes. I mean, I can't, again, I can't speak, uh,
There's no way to get it into our packet by Wednesday or that week.
Well, that's where I, that's where I'm driving.
I mean, the PRC is Friday to get that, but there's no way to get from Monday to Wednesday to our packet if denial, approval, whatever it takes.
Right, because you guys like to see it the Wednesday before, right, so we try to get it to you. So with that being said, when the ZDA, then Wednesday's two days, well, a day, almost later, I just don't see that happening. Uh, my recommendation would be that they, uh, submit everything by April sixth, which is your next meeting, or to be honest, or for the twentieth.
Twenty. You okay with that?
Yeah, I think that hopefully, I mean, I think that's realistic.
Yeah, that's on more realist.
Yeah, no, I, I think we're, we're talking along hopeful that due to the two straits of the law and where it's pushed us around, we can't do certain things that we'll hopefully get the one thing that we asked for, but, um, that'll change if someone's against it. They, you know, but I think we're just on that train of hopefully that worked for everybody, and if it doesn't, then we'll address that. But I think the, the second meeting may as well, so that we can address the stat as much as possible and be as in line as possible at that point.
And you can run PRC. If there is a big problem, you're gonna be cool with PRC too.
So if you go to the ZDA, that's the same week that Friday will have you on the PRC. So that we can talk on April first. And then the following Wednesday is when we would get everything submitted to us, so that you could hit that twenty.
Okay, Don, you'll hear that?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, now, one of the things that I know we're gonna want to see is the updated drawings that show the easement, especially the stormwater, uh, not going across, you know, the, that area. So I know you guys are working on that. I'm certain that between engineering and Don, we'll be working that out, but I just want to make sure we're on the same sheet.
Yeah, I've been engineering.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay, highway?
Um, no, I was good with his, with the turnaround and stuff on the road. We talked to the PRC, so I'm good.
Perfect, good. Engineering, Dan?
I remember being grouped, issued a comment letter prior to your last meeting, um, that obviously is being worked through as referenced by the applicant. I've had conversations with Don both offline and at the PRC. They're working through those comments. I did talk to, uh, the other design engineer that's working on the drainage and informed her of some of the potential issues of the pipes going across, the storm pipe specifically, that are going across that eastern area. Um, can it be done? Most certainly can't. If, if they can't address it, then what would ultimately happen? Would you would see a reduction in impervious surface? So the only thing that would occur is, is they can't comply as it stands now. The, the next step would be to make more room for more stormwater, and that would be reducing the impervious surface to accommodate that need. So there's at this moment, I believe you're seeing the worst case scenario, and the only thing that could occur from this point going forward if they couldn't address it, which I think they can't, if they couldn't, there would be a reduction in building size, reduction in pavement area to accommodate the drainage that is needed for this.
Which would have less impact than overall stormwater. What we're talking about here is specifically, we have an easement for water and sewer uh, that goes across the property. It's old pipe. We don't want them to dig over top of that if at all possible and lay anything down that could break that or make it a little less stable. Because certainly we don't want to get in there and fix it and repair. That's the last thing of what we want to do. So that's what we're talking. So since this is a public hearing, do I have anybody here in the room or online that would like to speak for or against this application? I'm sorry, Ron's got something before we do this.
Yeah, I got a question for Don. Uh, you you got my email with suggested wording on three of the criteria. Any questions on that?
Yeah, we're, uh, Paul and I are compiling a list, uh, or answers to every one of the items that's within the special use permit outlined. So we'll have, we'll have that, and then Paul is also compiled a letter, you know, spelling out his operations for a special use in his own words, as far as employees, numbers of trucks, all that stuff, hours of operation, so.
That'll make it a lot easier.
Yep.
Anything else?
So that's it.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do I have anyone here or online to speak for or against this application? One more time, anybody here or online to speak for or against the, uh, special use permit, um, for Safeway? Hearing none. We'll go to the board. Uh, we'll start with Adrian.
For tonight's, uh, the room.
Be good, we're doing, we're really only doing seeker tonight. Okay, continue to do this, please. Doug, anything?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, let's start with the seeker. Let's keep it clean. So we have a secret resolution of, uh, determination of non-significance. We have all the supporting documentation. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to, for, of non-significance for the seeker for this project? Moved by Adrian, seconded by Tim. Tim? Any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote on seeker.
Delusia?
Hi.
The beat?
Hi.
Adrian Bellas?
Hi.
Adam.
Hi. Okay, seeker's been complied, but now that this application can go to the zoning board of appeals and they can do their work over there. Next item up is two resolutions to continue the public hearing to April twentieth. Do I have a motion to waive the reading, block them, and approve them?
Motion by Tim?
Motion by Tim, seconded by Adrian. Almost done. Uh, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call vote, please.
Just one typo correction at, under, at the top of each resolution under action, it's a one-story client control.
Correct. That is correct. Make that correction, please.
That's been fixed. Uh, Tim Delusia?
Hi.
The beat?
Hi.
Adrian Bellas? Adam.
Hi. Okay, that takes care of our basic business for tonight. Now we've got some other board actions that we need to address. So we have the MTOD, which is called this major thoroughfare overlay district. I have somebody in the audience like this all the time, so it keeps me straight, okay? And then we have the MSOD, which is the Main Street Overlay District. These are two districts in different areas which, because they're laid out that way, have certain criteria that we set up that allow those areas to be maintained in a manner that the town feels is appropriate for those there. Does that make sense, Ron? You gotta stop me if I go off on the rails here. So we, we had this review. The board, Doug put some comments together. I like his comments. Uh, everybody else reviewed the comments I had, so didn't have any additional comments. I didn't really have any. Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, let's go to staff, though, and let's talk about, Ron, talk about these MSOD, MTOD review and any other things that we want to talk about.
Well, I think that with what Doug has provided, we can amend the, uh, MTOD regulation. I'm not sure how it affects the MSOD, but when I have time, I'll look in.
Right.
And, and get that taken care of. Um, Doug did a great job, I think, his input, um, and, and, uh, if we're, if we're, if we can move forward if, if there aren't any other things.
Okay, uh, Dan, anything from the building department?
Um, again, I, I, I have to say what Ron just said about Doug's review on that. I thought it was something that he brought up. Uh, and I think those are definitely beneficial items to add into the MTOD. Uh, I think this might be a good opportunity, as we talked earlier today, uh, to talk.
Just wrote down the note.
Yeah, so I don't want to take yours up here, but I think this would be a good opportunity to talk about, um, vehicle charging stations, and maybe that should be part of the MTOD, and how do you guys want that to work?
Yeah, the conversation came up last night at the LIBR meeting, actually, but it, it spurred my brain to go in that we need someplace and probably multiple places where this town encourages, not only encourages, but requires, um, what they term DCFC, direct current fast charge, which are basically the fast charge, um, EV electric vehicle charging location. And if we put it in the MTOD, I think MSOD, the MTOD over is all the MSOD, correct? Pretty much. So I think the MTOD, we put it in MTOD as a suggested, you know, based on planning board review or whatever. Uh, if we feel it's appropriate, I mean, we were talking about the one we're gonna talk about in a minute, the Tops Market. We probably want, well, we want some someplace, but I wouldn't put it at a fast food restaurant. I wouldn't necessarily put it at a bank, but I would put it at a, a sit-down diner or a sit-down, uh, restaurant. So I think we need some flexibility to allow us to do that, but I think we need to put in DCFC charging units or have the ability for the planning board to require DCFC charging units uh, where we feel is most appropriate. I mean, certainly things are not gonna change. We're not going back to whatever, we're gonna end up with DCFC charging units or whatever the next version of is all over at some point in time as, as time changes, so.
There might be other stuff to discuss with that, though, I, I mean, from what I've seen.
You probably have seen more with than I have.
One of the latest things that's out there is, uh, companies that will install them.
Yep.
Not charger, but they have advertised one.
And
that's how they pay for their services. They actually sell advertised on your service, and that, that's gonna be the type of units that have installed out there. This company will get free out of that life code for advertising.
Well, and I think there are gonna be, there are already, and I tried to find them today to be honest with you. I think there are going to be places that they're just gonna be like the Tesla ones where they say, I'm gonna put them in. You don't have to pay anything. We'll pay for them and we'll charge people for them and we'll give you a kickback of whatever percent of revenue. I, I'm not sure we're there yet, but I think it's very close if we're not. So I think you're right. We need to be flexible, but we need to have some abilities for EV charging at a much higher level.
Uh, and those fast chargers too, but I know those, they have to be tight, right?
Oh, I'm sure they do.
The power of your
But they need three-phase power.
Yeah, but even if you have three-phase power, it's open, that's not enough to handle those fast chargers. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Until technology
On the other hand, if they're not fast chargers, I mean, uh, I'd say on level one charges vehicles in an hour at about five miles, ten miles per hour. A level two will do twenty miles, they think, per hour. And DCFC will do a hundred in an hour. So that's what you really want. That's where everyone goes.
Yeah, we're starting to put them in, actually, in some, some of the
There's your stuff you do, or?
Well, everywhere, they're looking at hours, lots of times out there, some of the, actually, the advertised ones are.
Did the advertising, when you brought that up, is that just more like the framework that's there with the charging system like this, just on the
Yeah, it's, 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 it's charging unit itself, yeah.
So it's not like a billboard around it either, so it's, what's the framework?
No, it's, it's the frame, yeah, it's right on there. I mean, I guess, you know, the, the other concern might be would be partly if those are reserved only for certain vehicles, how does the town?
So it's not the project, it's a bit into
Yeah, yeah.
Or not, it's right this second?
Yeah. Well, we could, we could work it so that we, we could encourage or recommend, but some of those details, I think, might
Details need to be worked out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I wanted to take back to that. I think MTOD, we might be able to put some verbiage in there. Uh, but I want to do a lot more research. We're looking at code or anything like that.
Absolutely.
Uh, but Doug, I would greatly appreciate any information that you can add.
I'm gonna wag your chalso and stuff.
No, because, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna have my staff do some research too, but I, I think MTOD, we might go ahead and do quickly, we could add some. Yeah, I'm going to have myself do some research too, but I, I think MTOD, we might go ahead and quickly, we could add some uh, authority with it and then we can move from there. We'll get more information. Yeah.
But anything else, Dan?
That's all I got.
Highway, MTOD, MSOD? Okay, engineering.
No, but we'll have to take a look at it from the lighting that we have been updating and becoming a pain in everybody's butt. So, uh, the one item that, that will have to be addressed going forward will be updating the specs that are currently in there to reflect the new specs that the town's looking to adopt and then updating that language. So other than that, everything that Doug brought to us, I think makes sense. I support the town on that. Uh, I don't think there's anything different.
So where do the specs normally go? Do they go in the MTOD? Do they go into?
So site design details or? Site design is the, is what we hold everybody to. But in MSOD, we have design requirements and those requirements have lighting specs that are in there. And then to the cross-references, that MSOD about where we want these things to be placed. So essentially all three have to be updated. We're doing them.
Right.
Uh, we're doing the site design now. Once that gets adopted, then that would then translate to a spike that needs to be added into the other two, uh.
Can't we just reference the site design so we don't have to change it everywhere all the time?
The only other one that we have a detail in is MSOD. MTOD is just a reference to it.
Well, let's do the MSOD and let's make it a reference into the site design so that we don't have to change it one time as opposed to, I mean, save everybody a lot of work redoing documents. Although Ron loves to do them.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any else, Dan?
I don't have any.
Ron?
One of the other sections that I said to you today that I wanted to have time to look at is chapter one sixty-five, section one hundred, which is your site, uh, design criteria.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I very suspect that it does not have themes in there that perhaps we need to have. So that's a quick fix on that.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Okay, uh, we're on MTOD, MSOD review. Anybody here on the board, any additional comment? Okay, what's our next move on that one, Ron? Do we just find the time to
look at what Doug has and look for what we need to make changes and perhaps work a lot to the world?
Okay, so we can just send staff off to do that and, uh, go forth and document. Okay? All right. So that takes care of that. Okay, now, next one is recommendations to the town board. Farmington Market Center incentive rezoning application. Okay, we have a draft, uh, that Ron put together, very, very, um, detailed and good summary, I think, of where we have thought things should go. Uh, the only thing that I had personally was to add possibly some charging, a charging comment in there that maybe the town board should consider as an incentive. And basically, we were talking beforehand, Pete, on, um, charging and the thought was, the comment came up anyway, is maybe we don't necessarily need charging at Tops per se, but maybe we could get as an incentive to the town to have Tops purchase and, or pay for the installation of a DCFC charger at a couple of our parks. Maybe Mertensia, maybe the town park here, just as a thought for an incentive, uh, if the town board felt that was appropriate to do. This gives you something else to think about as an incentive, at least now and maybe going forward in the future.
So you could determine that.
It's a, it's an amendment, correct. I call incentives an amenity and whatever, I know. So, um, so basically what we're doing now is we're talking about the Farmington Market Center, the Tops Plaza, and the town board has a incentive zoning project in front of them. And what that does is that allows the town board to establish the way this is going to be set up outside of requiring, outside of the details of our zoning code. So they can put things in there and allow the development in a way that doesn't necess, isn't necessarily lockstep in line with what our zoning requirement does. So it gives the town board a lot of flexibility to do things and meet the needs of the community at the same time with some amenities to the town. So there's all kinds of things. So the town board is, is in the process of that for this. So just try to, so you don't know, we're, we're off, and I know we're talking about a whole bunch of things that are complex. So, okay, so where are we having that, Ron?
Yeah, okay. Two things. Number one, I did a draft report for you.
Yep.
I believe, I'm seeing it last week.
Yep.
And, uh, then on fifteen, received a, a letter from, uh, Jerry Goldman on behalf of GLN, expressing some concerns about they didn't think, they being VNE, GLN, and others, that the amenities that were being proposed were, citing, uh, a number of, uh, potential impacts on transportation that, that they, GLN, are, um, having to deal with. So, um, I, I point out that the planning board very purposely did not go into the weeds and talk about uh, values of amenities. Uh, we did talk about the consistency of the resulting of the campaign plan. And we did talk about how it meets certain of our planning objectives for the plan. The issue of amenities is a policy decision that the town board has to make. And I don't think planning board is prepared or ready to jump into that arena. Based on, with the time in advance to review what's being proposed.
Right, and certainly I've had conversations with each board member. And we've, I believe, I think we're all in lockstep, that we don't believe that it's our role to tell the town board what the value of amenity is. Certainly, if we have additional required or recommended amenities such as charging, we can certainly include that, but I don't see us getting in the weeds and saying, oh, no, this is worth five dollars, this is worth ten dollars. That's not our role. That's what the town board, you know, gets involved in. So. Does anybody have a problem with that?
I mean, I don't have a problem with the number or any number like that, but I mean, the build out of that area is not happening this year either. Those numbers aren't going to be, I mean, not going to track like up this year because the build out's not there. So, I mean, I guess I don't see why they're being upset over the fact that they decided to build the road, to get it done, you know, but so I, I, I get what they're saying, but I'm not going to put them down myself.
I agree with your, anybody else have any comments about us not wanting to put numbers on things? Okay, nobody's going there. Nobody's going. Okay, any else, Ron?
Yeah, I just, you know, I haven't heard anything back from the planning board, so I assume the draft that was prepared is adequate to respond to the town board so that they have it as they requested for their meeting on the twenty-second.
Yeah, I believe it's twenty-second, yeah.
Uh, and, uh, you know, based on that, they can decide whether to proceed or go ahead or, or whatever.
Okay.
What they're asking for, I think, is more detailed traffic analysis, which would normally be part of the secret process when we get to the overall preliminary site plan. Um, and how that gets paid for and all that's to be discussed. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, it definitely is a town responsibility. We can't pick for a traffic study and then that, that doesn't make sense at all.
Don't get me started on traffic studies.
So anyway, um, you know, alls I can say is we are seriously looking at all of this, uh, we being myself supervisor and the town board. Um, we think that there are some opportunities here to, uh, resolve some of these unknowns and we'll, we'll work forward to see if we can find a solution.
Okay, anything else? Dan?
I didn't play it before, anybody else? No, I mean, I thought Doug said something about sidewalks and DOT regulations for the incentive program or whatever. If they're really incentives or how that works with the somewhat reguard.
It's a sidewalk amenities, they're off-site, they're not on-site, right? Correct? Well, it's fifty-fifty, I mean.
So, as you know, some of the off-site amenities include completion of the signaling intersection at Mertensia and ninety-six. It includes the condition of the sidewalk along the east side of Mertensia, south of ninety-six, the connect. All, all of that, uh, other stuff relating to onsite amenities, like from ninety-six over to the entrance on the south side of ninety-six. That's onsite. That's not an amenity. The sidewalks coming in from Mertensia along that southern driveway. Access sidewalks in the site. You have in your code requirements that when you have a certain threshold, you've got to provide separation of pedestrian vehicle movements. We did that with GNA, for example, where they agreed to redesign their driveway access and to install the, the new section of sidewalk from ninety-six in the plaza. Great. So, I mean, everybody understands it.
So, yeah. Okay, Dan?
Uh, I have no problem.
Highway engineering. Okay, we're, Tim?
Well, the, the traffic law is going to be a concern for me, but I don't see where we need to deal with that this time.
Hey, what Tim's talking about is specifically the exit on Mertensia from the plaza. Certainly, Tim enjoys that more than most of us do and has severe issues at that, at that site where people are darting across to burn area right in front of people. Stupid people doing stupid things, you know, but certainly there are issues with that Mertensia.
Well, it's, it's so close to ninety-six and Mertensia intersection and the people that are supposed to stop and before they turn on red, you don't stop. So, you know, you never, you never know what's coming at you when you're trying to turn left out of there. So it's, it's not too safe in my estimation.
Yeah, so for the record, when, two, three years ago, when we were talking to the developer, he attempted to purchase property south, you know, one of, one of either of the two that are there to move the exit and nobody would budge. So.
Yeah.
It is where it is.
But we hope that in the future, if they do purchase it, maybe you can move it down over there and get rid of that because that's coming. So, okay, uh, any else, Tim?
No.
Doug?
No, it's Doug.
Okay, Adrian? Um, so, so what I would like to do is to get the approval from the board to move forward with this with the addition of putting in a paragraph or a comment about charging. And Ron and I can work out the wording on that. We'll put that in there and then I can sign it and get it to the town board beforehand. Do I have? You guys okay with that? Voice vote, okay with that, adding charging and then having me sign it and send it to the town board?
Yeah, basically, we, we spent tonight before the meeting, discuss off-site amenities.
Yes.
And it might include those charging stations here at Town Hall or Town Park, Mertensia, or additional ones to be reprieved, or, you know, it's coming.
Right.
We're, we're faced with reality that we really have electricity to deal with. So, um, we'll, we'll put something together.
Okay, and then I'll sign it and get it. Okay, Dan, I want to just take one step back to Safeway storage, but we didn't do something I think we should do. Ron and I have talked about this. The town board typically, or the planning board typically tries to go on the record in our minutes about a comment about an upcoming zoning application. We don't necessarily approve, disapprove, or make a recommendation. But we do have a, some wording that Ron put together here. I'll read it to you. Does the planning board understand the town staff is working on a draft of the law to amend the criteria for granting a special use permit for mini warehouse sites which will include standards for conditioned mini warehouse buildings and units? These draft resolutions are targeted for introduction to town board at their meeting on March twenty-second and should, which should, which should help, I'm sorry, trying to read this. The zoning board of appeals, as it deliberates, the pending area variance application under review for this application. While the planning board has no objection to conditioned mini warehouse buildings and storage units, we have no recommendations to make at this time on the minimum relief necessary to allow the size of the proposed condition mini warehouse building and storage units as part of a pending preliminary site plan application for the board. Our preliminary, preliminary site plan approval decision, our preliminary site plan approval decision will be based upon further information being provided by the applicant for design solutions that address the town's prohibition of structures being placed within the site's sanitary sewer easement area, how best to accommodate the site's overall drainage solutions, and how onsite parking of vehicles will be provided while visiting and condition mini warehouse building and storage units, screening of both outdoor storage area of boats, trailers, and RVs, which is currently being worked on. So I'd like to have that put into record. I'll give that to, to John. And just so we will go on the record is having said something about it, but yet not makes, not basically recommending approval. Anybody have any problem with that? Adrian, you don't? Did you want to read that again? Okay. We're just basically saying, if you want, if the zoning board wants to grant a variance up to and including whatever the town board reviews on the twenty-second, we don't have a problem with that, but we're not going to tell which way. Basically, and to me, that's what it says in verbose manner. Anybody have a problem?
All right, it's, is that after meeting this month?
Yes, so it's after your meeting.
Yeah, but our meeting, even if we introduce the law, is not going to get approved till April. So the zoning board should act no matter what town board does.
True, but they might be able to see from your discussions whether or not you agree or disagree with it, but you're right, it certainly wouldn't be, it wouldn't be approved by any, in any way.
Right.
But it might give them some insight into where the town might be considering going. So we're not, we're basically saying the same thing. We're not saying, no, we're not saying one way or the other. Okay, so we got that taken care of. Next item up. Uh, Dan, we sent that out on the location of the generator, right?
Yeah, uh, we got a request, uh, for Reliant, um, that they would like to put a generator behind their building, which that's not the issue. The issue is they want to put a six-foot cedar fence around it that matches the building. Uh, again, not really a big issue either because these would both be approvable with code. I mean, if they built the building and put the generator back there with a permit, we would get no screening or anything. So at this point, here's a building, it's not filled. I'm bringing it back in front of you guys to just make sure that you're okay with them putting a six-foot cedar fence around the generator for screening. And the cedar fence will be, uh, painted to match the building's style. Uh, so I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it.
Yeah, because Dan brought it to me and I said, well, we're going to look back, we'll discuss it here. And we've got it here and discussed. I don't, I don't personally have any problems with it.
Per code, it's an approval case. Uh, and again, like I said, if they would have built the building, when they come back in and gotten a permit, they could have just put it back there and we would have had no. they could have just put it back there and we would have had no screening, no anything. But since the building's not filled right now, we have the opportunity in this board to give the input of what you would like to see. They're saying that they would like to put this cedar fence around.
Six foot?
Six foot. Well, the unit is probably similar to what's behind here.
Yeah.
So, and what we saw at Lions, I mean, they're five feet tall alone, so probably you would need a six foot so that they don't see. And, yeah, remember, there is no, uh, enclosed dumpster area at this facility. So, I mean, this would sort of be same kind of thing.
Any issue?
Doug would be fine, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, I can, that's a pretty good point. I've had some others that I've been going to ask. Got something that I want to ask about.
What about someone else?
Well, it would be. Hard cover or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I would call it a proper maintenance.
Uh, it's a wooden fence, so it's not going to stray any gear, but.
Actually, is there any, I mean, that's a wooden five street. From a code point of view, we like to see more vinyl and stuff like that, but I think from their point of view, they want to put something that they can match the building.
Which is not good.
So, I think it would be.
Okay, I don't think anybody has an issue with that.
So, what do you want to do? We'll go to five tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, now, next item up is open discussion. Ron, tell us about what's going on.
Uh, we basically approved it. We didn't do it a formal vote because and we're going to revise it, they authorized me to sign it and send it forward. So, it was a voice vote as opposed to a.
All is fair?
Yeah.
Aye. Got to have a clerk to keep it in line on all these different little pieces. So, I think I appreciate it, John. Okay, Ron, you're up.
Okay, uh, question? Couple of local law actions. The county planning board recommended approval of the local law to provide criteria for the repair of agricultural equipment.
Right.
And construction equipment and painting. So, that's coming back from the town board for a public hearing next Tuesday. And hopefully, there won't be a lot of objection to it and we can get that taken care of so the applicant can get his special use permit, which he already has a site plan for, uh, which was part of the criteria we used to break the local law. On another matter, I, I finished today, uh, eight pages of criteria for amending special use permit conditions for mini warehouse facilities. I gathered a lot of input from various communities across the country with Dan and John and, and we went through it. Uh, I think I have corrected the wording that they want. It is intended to make distinguishing, uh, the control, the, the.
Climate control?
Climate, uh, no.
Climate control?
Condition.
Condition.
Condition of mini warehouse structures such as always lack, or always lack, that is what they're.
Right.
Um, and there are other features that I have thrown in there for consideration. For example, I think the always lack building was very nice without having a fencer. Okay, I don't think you need a fencer on the building that you have a secure door for.
Right.
Uh, one of the thoughts that John came up with, well, maybe, you know, with these buildings, maybe they need to have a loading dock where they could bring stuff down, okay, well, if that makes sense. But you don't need loading docks if you're only dealing with a ten-foot square building or storage unit.
Right.
When you've got a hundred or two hundred square feet, you got enough of them, maybe that justifies having a loading dock.
Or if you're keeping cars or boats or something like that.
Well, that's the part. Then interpretation, uh, said that, you know, we didn't need to worry about, uh, that because there's nothing in the code right now that says that outdoor storage of RV units and boats and trailers.
I'm done, my insight, I'm ignored.
Oh, that's a whole different. By the way, just, just for your information, one of the, um, things that I learned just today, I shared that, is that there is a trend now that these conditioned buildings are being used for growing of the recently approved legalized hemp and, uh, and marijuana. So, that's something that ag markets are starting to look into and we all know when ag markets gets involved in something, it really gets difficult for COVID portion.
Wow, what's the fire department saying about that? Is the fire there?
Oh, they, they, they take their mask off. Where's Doug?
I know, I know. Any else, Ron?
There is, um, uh, other things coming along that, uh, you'll be hearing a lot about, some exciting things, uh, in this town that still continues to grow. And it's very encouraging that we have such a strong, uh, market out there for both residential, commercial, and industrial.
Right.
So. That's all I have.
Cool. Dan?
I, I have put a list of things forward, so, I'll start with, right off where Ron left off with the growth of the community. Uh, building permits are, are starting to increase again. We just got over halfway's corners this week alone. I believe twenty-five, uh, new townhomes permits submitted to us. And, uh, we've had on top of that, probably another ten to fifteen new homes with, in the subdivisions, just alone in this last week. So, uh, as the weather starts to get nice, we're starting to see the increase in, in building. Uh, so, on the flip side of that, uh, we are starting to see some projects come to an end. Uh, I'm going to start with buyers, we were out there this week and we gave them a temporary CMO for their building, uh, which, with that temporary CMO, their old building has to be removed. So, they're taking this week and transferring everything from one building to the other. And then, starting on next, the middle of next week, you'll start seeing that building come down. Uh, and they have some very strict timeframes if they have a temporary CMO of things they have to meet, or they lose their CMO on their current building. So, we, we kept it tight for reasons that they had over the project. And, uh, but we had long discussions to make sure they gave me rates that were reasonable. Yes. So, I, I think we're in a good spot, but if you start seeing them working out of the new building, that's the reason why. We should see that project pretty much wrapped up by middle of that, is what I, is where those signs are.
And what about their sign?
Their sign is in front of the ZVA, um, so, that should, well, should here. They have a temporary sign that they got a permit for, which is that banner up front, uh, which is actually located where their paintings are going to be. That, they only have thirty days on that, so, if they don't get a permit for their sign, then they're going to have to go back to the drawing board, but that temporary sign will be gone. But in thirty days, the paintings, I found out yesterday are complete, they're just waiting on the frames so they can mount, mount them, but obviously they're not going to mount them until they take down their temporary sign. So, about that building.
Cool.
Uh, they are going to have some sort of grand opening ceremony. Uh, and I guess it has to do something with their very large flag they put up. Uh, so, stay tuned, I will put out the information when I know more. Okay, uh, Ron came out and looked at their building, well, that's a, it's a nice facility.
Very nice.
Good. Uh, then we're going to jump right next door.
I, you know, I got to interrupt you because I love the part when Dan, and like this, to see if there was glass in the panel. You know, you probably walked into it.
I've learned over the years, sometimes that glass can be very clean and sometimes the glass isn't there at all, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, jumping right next door to the car wash. Uh, they are very close and they're looking for a CMO next week, um, for their building. Obviously, it will be a temporary CMO as well because of landscaping, something they will have to do. Their streetlights are supposed to be installed on Monday. And we will be out there looking to do an inspection on Wednesday. And hopefully, with any luck, in the next few weeks, we'll start cleaning a wash car. Um, all right, so the next thing I have on here is update two. Do you have a question? Okay.
Sorry.
All right, uh, update the codes. Ron mentioned some of the codes that we are working on. I also have some to the administration side of it, which is chapter seventy-four, uh, that the state so recently said that, hey, you have to meet these new regulations and you have to update your administration on how you do it. So, but, this is a little bit of a backwards step for us because we had just gone through that chapter a year ago. And, uh, now they've put all these new regulations and operating permits and all things that have to be in there that we came in touch, so. Uh, I've been working with Jeff Brad on that and trying to get all those details. We're going to see that one come out for the public hearing as well. And then the last thing that I've been chasing with highway is, uh, swips and saltwater and mud in the roads and it's that avenue that we're harboring on all these contractors, have you been at PRC? It's, you know, we talk about that with everybody that comes in and builds. Uh, and some of these developers just don't get it and we're getting closer to violations and shutdowns and uh, it's something the town thinks very seriously. And if we have to stop people from working so they have, they force them to clean our roads, then that's what we're going to do, so. Uh, I know that highway has company in the loop on a lot of them and, uh, we're just trying to keep everything clean. It is very difficult this time of the year.
I'll just make a general comment since it fits in here. I've called Dan numerous times in the last couple of weeks about pallets. How many frigging pallets are we going to have next to the side of the road for all these different businesses that are in front of the, the pool place, they're in front of, well, they're over a safe place still, they're in front of the Johnston, they're all down, up and down, pallets.
I was just thinking, that might be something we're buzzing the MTOB to make sure that that can happen.
That's a good idea, Ron.
That might be the thought.
Put something about pallets and drives deep rate, especially if you're running on ninety-six down in front of the frigging, uh, pool place. It's just crazy.
Pallets are hard to chase because normally by the time I go through the process, they're.
I know, I know.
So, but maybe if you had a little bit more heat than the MTOB, at least in those main corridor that might allow us to focus more on that, it's just, it's, it's a tough one.
Yeah.
Uh, so the last thing I have to report on is your next meeting. You have the Bowerman Road subdivision that you guys continued, uh, from previous meeting. And we believe that Tomra will be also presenting, uh, at that meeting. And then you just continue the rest of everything from today to the following. So, that's what your report's looking like.
Cool. Go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I had remembered once there. Delaware River Solar has submitted a grant maintenance bond that I and Dan have completed our reviews of. We're now looking for additional information and we'll see where that goes. And then satisfied with what they gave us.
And that, yeah, that is the last piece of what's required. It would allow them to get a pre-construction meeting, which would allow them to begin construction. They've done everything up to this, this is the piece there. Anything else, Dan, Ron, Highway?
Um, yeah, just going on what Dan said, especially with Marano up there, there's just a lot of mud in the road. They're not very good at cleaning that. Put that email out the other day and Brandon called me right off and said there'd be, uh, a concrete wash out there because I caught the guy back on Osborne dumping his, his concrete back there cleaning out his truck. And it's like, you're supposed to be cleaning up and you couldn't, in the cleanout area, and you didn't even know where it was. So, they're not communicating very well up there. I kind of expressed to Brandon that, you know, eventually, they're just going to shut you down and make you clean everything up, so. I mean, they were up there, they cleaned up a little more today, but they just got so much mud on that road that, and we're, we're getting really close to a lot of these, the shutdowns.
I mean, do what you gotta do. Hey, we support it. Ron's there. Go ahead, Ron.
The other thing I was going to just mention, since your last planning board meeting, we did have a walkabout of the lands next to the park with, uh, students that Doug had made arrangements for. Uh, it was a very good walk despite some people sliding down and running into trees and bumping their head, all this other good stuff. Uh, and we look forward to their getting back to us at the end of the month here with some preliminary findings.
Nice.
Uh, Doug, you got a great bunch of students there, a professor came out. Uh, we had a good showing, conservation board, two members. The town board had three members. Uh, we had a great walkabout and, uh, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Nice.
It really is. Good. Sorry to be there.
Huh?
Sorry to be there. Yeah, I bet you wish you were there and sort of, where you at? Yeah, absolutely. Much better.
Thanks, Ron. Dan?
Okay, I'm going to, feel like Ron, I want to pick one more. And the only reason I remembered is because they turned this way. Uh, in the back here, you can see the lots of departments inside. There's a committee between the chamber of commerce and the town. And this is what we're getting close to proposing, just to have a review of it. Uh, this would replace the four large signs that are on the main, uh, corridor. And then it would also be smaller one, which would be keeping everything current, uh, with each color, uh, for all the other town roads coming in.
We, we already talked about this. We already talked about it. Think it's unanimous that we really likes it. I don't personally like the color combinations. I don't think it stands out enough. Tom? I know, I understand, I'm just telling you, I don't think it stands out enough despite you driving sixty miles an hour. But, and now I'm a committee, so I, I don't.
We're making a lot bigger, you'll, you'll be O C.
Yeah, okay, over the.
There was none.
There was none.
So.
And then the finger race, huh?
I'm just.
The racing.
Hey, it's not our responsibility.
Nope, I'm just making.
Okay, I agree. Any else from Highway? Uh, Lance?
No, no, I'll let you go.
Just make sure.
I'm thinking that once.
Yeah, I, I don't have much to say. Uh, EV stations, there's a hot topic going on across a number of the communities that we're in. They all have the same conversation that you guys are having. They're looking for examples, there isn't much. Most examples that we've seen are out of state, so obviously, I know Doug, you have experience on that. Sure, that's where you're going to be reaching from because they're, they're not quite sure how to require them, where to require them, uh, how to incentivize them, but they're all trying to go, a lot of communities are trying to go that way and it's becoming a hot topic.
And I sort of, there's some stuff out there, but sound real clear and, uh, it is what it is.
But I think your guys' approach about where to put it, why it can have it centralized that way, I think that makes sense. Um, I think erosion of several items, uh, a number of developers and their engineers have reached out to us because of the ongoing projects that they have with the community. Uh, they are, uh, reaching out to their contractors and informing them of the fact that this is an MS4 community and they have been informed, um, that they need to stay on top of things. So, I, I know the staff has done a good job of identifying it, but I'm just reinforcing that the conversation has continued on far end. We've also sent emails out to everybody reminding them that spring temperatures are changing. Anything they can do to stabilize the site's now is beneficial.
Let's see them.
And then last, there's training opportunities. You guys get plenty of it, but it, it's, it's available, websites, um, Hancock MRV Group. I know the county's got plenty. I know that there's a FEMA, uh, one coming out, uh, there's tons of them available. So, many topics, many opportunities there to be credits and.
Just make sure you resend it to us because some of us, it's.
No, that's fine.
In front of us on a regular basis. But it's not registered.
I'll be on that for next year, that's so good to have, John.
Okay.
You know, I don't know. I don't say I heard anything about my mind. Everything is still, I think everybody's gotten comfortable with the webinars. Not from a lot. I kind of like it as well. So I think at least for right now.
Okay, I just give her it's about what I come back.
I'm sure it will because there's other benefits still, but.
Yeah, okay. Next item up is public comments. Do you guys have any public comments?
We're trying to find Dan and another administrative person in the office and now he needs a code officer also. And who left by next? Oh, my next Tuesday, we should have an assessor hired between the town and Canada with us. And we're actively pursuing a water source superintendent. Hopefully in the next thirty to forty-five days, we'll have a selection. And what else?
You guys have some kind of a word that they are knowledgeable with, yeah?
Oh, yeah. Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Conference finally put out a notice today that we're, our firm is now a clean energy community.
Ah, yeah.
Good job.
Good job. Yep. And I was at MRB tonight and signed a whole bunch of paperwork to get a, another grant application in the mail for building an apartment, a water and sewer to scan the store documents.
Excellent. That's what I'm talking. Get that stuff scanned up and done. Yeah, and we've got the bar coming up, board assessment review coming up too. So that's going to be a zoo.
I'll, the assessor select will be here Friday.
Cool.
And we'll discuss with them. I'm thinking Rontsia Lodge is not going to be a good place. You're going, you're going to have a lot of people that probably shouldn't eat here and we'll be coming town board meeting.
Yeah, no, no.
Again, it might be three days of it.
Well, that's my thought. I suppose you got Canada with the same time and you got one assessor. So I don't know how it all works out. You guys figure it out and let us know. But I know at least be two days at least.
It's three, right? You said. And the documents are here. Right, Rontsia Lodge, you're moving documents back and forth.
Exactly.
Get six miles, not a big deal. You get sixty.
Better here.
Okay, we'll talk about that pretty.
All right, for me, I think you guys, I think I've chined in on everything I wanted to say. So let's go around. Adrian? Now then, Doug?
Uh, yeah, speaking of Myers, actually. When I was driving by, when we met other, you know, our process, they said there'd be any of the, the group that are any HVAC stuff, any transformers behind the ledge.
That is actually where it is on the safe place. They didn't want, I think if you had the building, it would fit for the addition still.
Okay, did, did they show a screening around that?
Yes, there is a screen that's supposed to be around. Okay, Fox, is the reason it's not there yet is that they had to put a curving in? And they're not putting the curving into that building down because that breaks you. So yes, there is a string in, there's screenage that goes around the fire pole. There's screenage that goes, we're building it. One they're tearing down because that's for propane and dumpster.
Yeah, I remember that. I just remember the HVAC system.
Yes, and it just stands out so much right now. Absolutely. Again, that, that should be done by middle of that.
Okay, no, as long as it's a screen. I just don't recall that being shown that way. I guess maybe it's a vision coming up from the building like that, so.
Well, that's, I, I didn't notice that either because it is on a plan, but it does come off the building to play a bit. So I don't even know if screening is going to block all.
Right. But again, that was something that I think, you know, before we asked these things, that, that shows up and maybe you can just think through this stuff a little better when we're asking these questions. That you got, it is a requirement to have a fully screened. So, you know, again, if it's a small unit or something, it's one thing. Transfer, where you have the stuff running up to the, you know, certain story up there. And let's be interested to see how that gets screened.
And, any else?
Tim, just a question for Ron, I think. On your code that you're working on for the, the fine conditions store. Parking, you're considering for perhaps trailers? If they're going to be storing vehicles indoors?
There's, there's a lot in that. That is dealing with the effect of screening of outdoor parking. Vehicles, trailers, RVs, boats, things in this nature. There's a lot there, but to remember parking requirements based on the size of the storage units. So if you have a full building, a small number of units. You need as many parking spaces as you like for larger ones where you'd be spending more time there going through those units. There's also requirements in there for just a whole litany of things. But I, I just want to throw something up. These units are not to store boats and cars and stuff. Those are climate controlled indoor that you're going to condition space.
Yeah, there is not a condition space to store automobiles or.
We need to make that clear because a lot of places indoor storage, conditioned storage can do automobile.
Well, and there's, our code will not allow that. There's certain things in the code that says that it can't be combustible. They have a combustible engine.
Right.
Inside.
Okay.
Well, you, you can't work on any, whether it's conditioned or unconditioned.
I mean, with Paul's current layout of his facilities that he has already pre-existent, some of those are climate controlled units with roll-up doors on. Just so you know.
Yeah, but.
I'm sure he's got cars in some of those, but maybe not, but that, you know.
Well, it's pre-existing and.
Right. I'm, I know what you're saying, where you're saying it's going to be like always locked where it's a building. You walk in and you go to your unit and it's, there's no way to get cars in there or anything like that. You might get that.
So I'm going to review the code that we have out and I'm going to make sure that we.
Yeah, because they could take your climate control building, like the one they're proposing and put a, you know, big door and let people drive up in and park in their things. I mean, I just want to make sure.
Is that, is that office a whole never hazard for a part of it?
But I bet you have them now in climate control, but the single ones where they got the roll-up doors. I each one, I would almost bet that. Because that's what people want. You're going to store a vintage vehicle. You want it necessarily in climate control. You don't want, you know what I mean?
And with the loading dock stuff earlier, I mean, were you just saying like a roll-up door where they can unload their stuff? Or are you saying where a big truck back up and unload it, a loading dock like that?
Yeah, like a moving truck back in. You wouldn't have to go down the ramp to, you could just unload it. We, we did some research. A lot of them up in Rochester have that as an option. So it, it's a nice feature. I mean, a lot of people do that. They grew back up a U-Haul right to it. And there's, you, you can roll things right off and it's not, you're not going to have a little ramp or whatever and that. Just a little bit more convenient.
One of the things we wanted to add earlier is all these pallets being stored all over the place. The regulations that we drafted doesn't allow for that. They don't put them outside the secure area. They don't put them outside the dumpster. Okay, if, if they want them, then they have other arrangements.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything? Okay, who does? Tim? Okay. All right. So motion here by Adrian, taken by Tim. All in favor? Aye, okay. Meeting's over.
Too much fun. I got a couple here, boy. If you want, um, the graphs of the, the talking one. Okay.